Test, test.
Test, test.
Test, my, okay, test, test.
I'm broadcasting from some real interesting.
Something wrong, I can't get it out.
Oh, yeah.
Think that.
All right, so, what's the plus?
Oh, there's a green one.
Oh, anything y'all could have on Facebook today? Facebook is crap.
Oh, really?
What, did you watch 60 Minutes last night?
No.
Okay, well, 60 Minutes last night, there was a woman who, the whistleblower about their algorithms and how they, what they do. So she was on 60 Minutes last night and now today Facebook is, like she was telling about how they're not really, basically discussing like safety protocols, they say that they're working on hate speech and violent stuff, but that they're not really apparently or something. I, I was falling asleep, but my sister pointed it out and then it's been all kinds of things about Facebook being down today.
Yeah, I watched the four o'clock news for the weather because we got the, high for all, be very inspected, whole state coming in high tomorrow. And, um, Facebook, for all you people out there trying to get on Facebook, it's not your business. Facebook has been crashing down for all day.
Well, you know, maybe America would be better off if Facebook, probably shouldn't say that out. I think you guys got where I was going with.
You don't need your microphones on now, just to let you know.
I don't have one.
Oh.
We don't have our mics on. We'll turn our mics on to talk to you Julie.
It sounded like you were underwater.
Now I can hear you guys.
Are you having fun?
Yes.
How warm is it?
Ninety.
Oh.
That doesn't sound fun.
I think it sounds great.
Yeah.
Just so you know, it's been a beautiful sixty degrees here.
Yeah, it's been ninety here all week.
You can have it. Although I was jealous of the dolphins that I saw. Florida.
Great, fix the clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everything's on the back of the issue. Take it all off.
Hey, all councilors are present. Entertain a motion for, to accept the minutes for the nine seven meeting and the nine twenty-one meeting.
I'll move that we accept both of minutes from both meetings.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four point two, the department reports as submitted.
I make a motion, we accept the department reports as submitted.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Right, we're gonna move into the public hearings, we have three of them. Uh, the first one that will open up is five point one, proposed article for the eleven to twenty twenty-one election, to see if the town will approve spending twenty thousand six hundred ninety-four of undesignated fund balance to grant abatements necessarily to, uh, due to clerical errors. One online or anyone in the audience? Oh. Yep.
His mic's not on.
Oh, you, is your, is that green? Cause you're my, I don't think your mic's on.
Uh, cause why do you, why is that, uh, why is this particular item has to be, um, on the election, on the ballot for in November? I'm just curious for information reason. Do you want me to give it a try?
Yes.
All right, all right, Julie, hang in there with me if you need to.
Yeah.
The answer, the answer to your question would be that, uh, due to a clerical error, the abatements that were granted were more than the overlay to grant abatements, uh, uh, was more than that number. And so the deficit number is this twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. So just due to a simple error, uh, we need to take monies from undesignated fund balance to correct those errors. It's just a simple administrative thing. Had the error not taken place, then the council would have made sure that was sufficient overlay to, but to cover these potential abatements. But because it didn't happen that way, now we need this, and the reason for the hearing is because the article will be a part of the, on the November ballot. And so as part of due process, the council needs to hold a public hearing to allow the public an opportunity to ask questions and have discussion concerning the matter.
Right.
Right, and the, and the council is not allowed to spend, um, over a certain amount without voter approval.
Yeah, like the budget, right? We, the town approves the budget, the town has to approve this.
Correct.
Ten thousand dollars.
Twenty, so.
Do you know what the amount is Julie?
Right, you was asking the limit.
What is the limit for the council?
Uh, I don't know, I know if it's over five thousand, somebody has to come for you to get approval, like a department head, but I'm not sure. Um, MMA Legal said that we had to, because we're dipping into a fund that's not in the budget is the reason why we have to go out for voter, voter approval. Um, because it's not part of the budget that the, the town people voted on. So in order for us to get into the undesignated fund balance, they have to, we have to ask the voters if it's okay for us to dip into it to cover that era, even though it's like, it was a clerical era, the money didn't exist in the budget world, but it still affected the numbers. If that explains it.
I guess if no one has any.
Nothing more than I'm seeing.
Okay. Right then, I guess we'll close that public hearing then, if there's no more comments or questions. Uh, five point two, moving on, uh, the renewal liquor license for the American Legion, uh, one fifty. Alan, do you have, have they done everything they're supposed to do and the police and fire have checked it?
Um, Jeff, Jeff did sign off on it.
Okay.
Um, he signed off and approved their liquor license, no problem.
Okay.
There's no other sign off for that, just Jeff.
Okay, thank you. No comments? We can close that public hearing. We can, we'll vote on it later. Uh, five point three. The renewal liquor, uh, liquor license for Little Brick Pub.
Jeff also approved that one.
Okay. Right, well, we will close that public hearing. Comments from the public? Okay, this would be your time, I believe. Yep.
I don't see anyone.
Okay.
So going today, everyone?
Too bad.
Hello, everyone, my name is TJ there, for those of you that do not know me, uh, I live at Six Lane Road Mechanic Falls. Uh, I came to the city council meeting tonight to talk to you guys a little bit about the current state of affairs as it pertains to marijuana in Mechanic Falls. I currently own and operate High Rollers for a medical dispensary up on Route twenty-six in town here. Uh, High Rollers is one of four permitted dispensaries in town. The other open dispensary right now is four twenty Pharma on Route one twenty-one. The other two permits besides four twenty four in mine, I believe are for all intensive purposes are being what we call parked. You know, for those of you that are unfamiliar with this word, it sort of means that, um, these permits have been sought out for possibly future business, but really for the time being, they're just being parked on and paid for. And, um, yeah, they're being sought out for possible use at a laser date and one of them has been offered to be sold to me, you know, only new, uh, permit to be sold to me. But the real reason I'm here tonight is because I think that Mitch Berkowitz in his letter had a real, um, he had it right when he called the Route twenty-six corridor a real corridor of opportunity. I think the town should really be putting some effort into helping encourage businesses to help develop this corridor to help grab some, and you know that, uh, you know, the tourist traffic, you know, as well as, you know, much of the commuter traffic traveling up and down Route twenty-six. Uh, I would really like, I personally would really like to expand my business at High Rollers on Route twenty-six. And, uh, and for that to happen, I really, I need another permit is the problem and there's no more available. So I'm not able to expand my business, help, you know, develop the land and property around there because I need another permit from the town. And as I said before, all four permits are currently spoken for for retail establishments in town. When I built High Rollers, I had to pay personally, you know, for, to bring the electric down the street. You know, the electric actually stopped at the actual line and I had to pay for four telephone poles, you know, to help bring the, the services down the street, I had to pay fifteen hundred dollars a pole times four poles, just to bring, you know, regular services. I'm willing to do that again. But, uh, it's just, you know, I'm willing to do this again, you know, to bring power further down that corridor to help develop the property next to mine. Uh, what I need from the town is another permit. I can't even start the application process with the state, you know, to get another recreational retail permit without the okay from the town, that's my problem. I think we, as a town, have a tremendous opportunity in this quarter. And I think on top of that, marijuana businesses are secondly a great, also a great opportunity for the town. Uh, it's a great opportunity to help bring tax dollars especially. Oxford, our neighbor next door, for instance, has no limit licensure. That means they have no limit on the number of retail stores and or cultivation permits they're living out. So what that means is if I were to locate my new business, two hundred yards to the north, I'd be over the Oxford Town Line and I'd be paying them all of my permit fees, which are very high, as you guys know, as well as my tax dollars. I, you know, as a town resident, I'd really like to keep my business in town and help develop, you know, the property that I'm currently on. Um, in the one year that we've been open to High Rollers, I think we've been a tremendous asset to the town. We've worked really hard, you know, as I said, from day one, when I brought up the idea of opening a dispensary in town before we wrote all the laws, um, excuse me, before we wrote all the ordinances in town, I really said I wanted to be an asset to the town. I wanted to provide, oh, excuse me, I wanted to provide, provide everyone value, you know, how I can be an asset to the town. And, um, I'm continuing to try to work to do that. Uh, just last week, we were able to go to the Mechanic Falls Fire Department and donate a box of teddy bears to help, uh, for them to serve on the trucks as boo boo bears. Uh, they're the kind of bears that they give out to children in traumatic situations. And, um, I think that it's really our goal at High Rollers, not only to be, you know, an, an open business, but to really try to give back to our community. Uh, furthermore, we're also hosting a Mechanic Falls Community Trunk or Treat on Saturday, October thirtieth from three to six, where we're inviting not just cannabis businesses, but all businesses in town to come and use the property just to our south as a community trunk or treat for kids to come and, uh, hand out candy, or excuse me, people, hand out candy to kids. So, uh, yeah, where, where does it go? So, uh, you know, that's what I'm looking for, I'm really, this is the property, the new business I'd like to build right next door in mine. Um, this building is very similar style and I think it, you know, really add a beautification kind of ideal uh, to that current piece of property and I'd really like to continue to develop, keep my business in town and help encourage other businesses around. And I think Mitch Berkowitz really had it right, you know, he said it's, you know, that, as you guys know, the sewer stops, uh, sewer line stopped to the new, uh, sewage plant at the casino. There's no more power past me and I think it's, it's, uh, you know, I think the burden kind of falls upon, you know, us to try to, you know, encourage development and help, you know, grab some of those, that money that's driving by every day. So I just wanted to come up and explain you the situation and see what we could figure out together. Any questions or anything?
Um, do you, what, what do you use for your water source?
Uh, we're on a drilled well.
Drill well.
Yeah.
And, um, what is the required amount of gallons? I'm assuming you have a sprinkler, you're required to have a sprinkler system.
Nope, since we are single use retail, uh, there's no cultivation going on, we actually have, uh, you know, we don't have sprinklers.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I was thinking for fire purposes, you're not required to have, okay.
Nope, nope, uh, yeah, single use retail is actually the, the laws are very lax when it comes to fire suppression. In the fire marshal, as Alan will attest here, um, as Alan will attest, they said that we actually legally don't even need smoke alarms, as crazy as that sounds, you know, inside a brand new retail business. But obviously we decided to go to the further, the step and put in, uh, fire extinguisher, smoke alarms, you know, CO alarms and stuff like that. But there's no real, um, weird things going on, it's just a retail store, but, um.
I was, I was, I was just curious, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other questions I can answer for anybody?
So have you had this conversation with Alan?
Yeah, Alan is definitely aware of the situation, you know, he's, he's aware that, you know, uh, I mean, Alan came on after we wrote the laws, but he's aware that obviously, you know, he was there for, uh, the permitting of, I believe, the last two of the four permits. And, um, you know, and they've both been permitted for over a year and nothing's really developed in that time. So, you know, I'd like to obviously continue, you know, developing my piece of property up there and, uh, you know, I, I need your guys' help with it, you know, I'd really like to bring the business to the town.
So, just to make sure that I understand, there are four permits, correct?
Correct, retail permits.
Retail permits, and there are therefore recreational permits as well?
No, that's actually included in there, yeah.
So, and the four retail permits are where right now, you have one?
Yep, um, uh, John Blink, uh, guy owns four twenty Pharma, Bob Clark.
Oh, Clark, okay.
Bob Clark has two.
He has two.
Another gentleman, Tyler Monahan, has another one.
Okay, and, and are they all active?
No, only for, yeah, only myself and four twenty Pharma have been active for about a year. The other two have been permitted for just about close to a year now and have, you know, there's been not any progress.
And I guess might be a question for Alan, how long can those permits be held?
So I have had conversations with the people that have the current permits, so, um, Bob Clark is trying to, he's had business, um, changes and he's trying to find someone for that other license to partner with him to go and to whatever it is they want to do, I don't know. So he's, he's, I asked him if he was holding on to that because he wanted to hold it to eliminate other competition or is, does he have a plan for that? So he said he had a plan. Tyler Monahan has a, uh, which is down in Chicagney Storage, he has a permit for use for retail. Um, I've recently, actually, this morning I talked to his architect, so he's revising his retail plan for that space and does expect to submit a major development plan as opposed to his previous minor development plan for marijuana retail at that space. Um, none of them, uh, no one in town so far has gone through the state process to receive recreational um, use to sell recreationally in town, although any of those licenses could do that if they want to do that. And I believe Bob Clark is in that process, but hasn't completed it and it's not due to anything of his home, his own actions, but the state hasn't, hasn't been able to keep up with those licenses so far. So that's my understanding.
And there's one that's on, did you say on hold or?
Uh, all of that, none of them have been processed from, by the state that I know of, and I would know because they would come to me with their approval from the state, seeking my signature.
Okay, and is there a time period on that?
There isn't, and I've talked to all of the retail holders of those permits because, um, in my explanation to, uh, in particular Bob Clark, since he holds two and has one active and one is not, is because of the way it is now and the state hasn't been able to keep up with their permitting. Everyone, if they just renew their license, I'm going to renew it because it's to no fault of their own that they haven't been able to get that retail license. So I said, this next year, if there's a place in town that gets their retail license and you haven't by the end of the year, that may be a different story and we'd have to talk to our attorney about that. So that meaning they had the possibility to get their license, but they haven't, therefore they're holding it.
Yeah.
Like, as, as TJ said.
Okay, I guess the, and if somebody holds a license, how long can they hold?
That's a question for Jack and I don't know the answer to that because it's, it's a little bit unusual because the state hasn't been able to keep up with those license, the licensing of that.
Combination. Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, I've been working on my adult use permitting, my retail plan, and I'm at the point where I need the, the town's okay with it. So I know that the state is actively processing applications, so I think Bob is probably stretching the truth a little bit, saying the state is slow, but they are actually opening stores. processing applications. So I think Bob is probably stretching the trees a little bit, saying the state is slow, but they are actively opening stores every day. Um, and I think that I know from my personal talks with him that obviously he's, he's, uh, he's ready to retire. He's trying to get out of the business. He's trying to sell the permits. You know, so that, you know, that's why he's offered him to sell them to me, you know, to, you know, use that last land use permit, but, um, that's where I was at.
If you have something to add about selling the permits. So that is something I have talked to Jack about and that cannot happen, will not happen through the town office anyway. So those are not saleable or passed, you can't pass those on. It's for a property, it's for a user in that property. And when that user or that property changes hands, that permit goes away and it's available again.
Yeah, as you guys know, anytime a permit changes at all, even ownership, it's supposed to go back through planning board approval. As, that's what we wrote in the ordinance when we wrote it. So anytime any changes, any, any names on the application or on the current permits, or if you're doing anything outside of what was permitted in that specific claim board meeting, has to go all the way back through uh, planning board approval and then back through town council meeting. So I know they couldn't be directly sold to me, but essentially they were, you know, playing on absolving, you know, their rights to that, saying, hey, I'm not gonna build this anymore. So I'm allowing me to build, but I really, you know, that's, that's not where I want this town to go as in the direction is I really want to try to like, you know, a rising tide raises all ships, right? So I really want to try to raise this all up, deliver value as best I can and, uh, you know, help develop my property and really just keep this, you know, keep this one hundred with everybody. So.
So who am I quit? Or, and I'm asking, I'm trying to learn, I've learned a lot and you why do you need another permit? Is it, is it an adjacent property or is there, uh, only a certain amount that can be allowed on a business? I, I'm asking, cause I want to know.
Yeah, yeah. Great question, Darryl. Um, actually, so specifically in the law, the laws are very complicated, especially when it comes to cannabis. So it's funny, the law as it pertains to cannabis, the state law says one facility, a facility okay, may not be medical and adult use. You have to have a separate facility.
So you would need the permit for, to do the adult use.
Right. So my, yeah, yeah. So I've already been approved from the town on my specific permit. It says, uh, help me out. It says medical and or.
Or, but, so you'd either have to switch your business that you have right now, or you need another permit.
Correct. Yeah, it says medical and or. So I'm already permitted to do and both, but in the town law, it says, you know, with a second facility, it needs a second permit, you know, so it's, it's kind of like.
And if I may, um, the legislature were going to address this and make it so that they supposedly could do both in the same building, but then COVID hit and all of that came to a screeching halt. They're talking maybe next year.
Yeah, they're, they're really, right now, the two programs are, yeah, the two programs are kind of, you know, they're diverting, they're both doing very well on their own, as you know, like cannabis in the state has now overtaken lobster as main's cash crop. So it's pretty incredible. So, but right now both programs, everybody wants to keep them separate. So I don't really see them coming back to converge. Like we were on our second reading of the law to pass it, but so I think that this is kind of my only option if I want to try to deliver more, you know, more value to the town members and, you know, commuters.
And I understood incorrectly that you're asking, you want another permit. So you're asking potentially to add more permits? Or yet you, you would like to be able to
I think that's a, a great.
Acquire the, one of them that's not being used. I guess I'm just trying to.
What, whatever the town council really feels, you know, is, is the best option for all of this. You know, I think that, you know, Oxford, if we look at our neighbors next door, Oxford, you know, they have no limit licensure. You know, and I, I don't know if that's correct for us, but I think there's also maybe somewhere in the middle, you know, that allows me, I am specifically asking for just a permit, another permit, another land use permit to allow to have another retail facility is what I'm asking for. And however we can work that out, you know, whether it's a change in the ordinance or if it's, you know, using one of the four already, or if it's, you know, somewhere in the middle, or if it's even just amending my current permit that says medical and or adult use, allowing that to serve two facilities. That would be an easy solution, just amending my currently news permit wording to say two facilities.
And that's a question that's been brought up to me is if it's on the same lot and the buildings are reasonably close, why it could be since the state so screwed up, be construed as one permit for both uses, even though they're in separate buildings?
My interpretation of that, I couldn't construe it like that. Because it's very clear in our ordinance and really the ordinance is your law that you've created. So you're very capable and you can change that law at any time simply by changing the ordinance and the number on the ordinance. So that's completely up to you. I haven't had any trouble at all and a hundred percent cooperation from any marijuana business in this town to date. And the fire department, I think, would say the same thing. And so would the police department. Um, so changing your ordinance is within your right to do. Changing it for this one person is probably far less in your right to do because you're changing the rules for this one person.
And it wouldn't be us that would do it. It would be the planning board, wouldn't it?
They would change the, they would start the process. You would indicate to them.
So we would, it would require a request from the council to the planning board?
No, you're a question from anyone. A request from the council.
I have already been to the planning board, you know, in this process, you know, if you guys remember back, you know, and I was obviously denied because there wasn't, we ran out of permits. You know, so I obviously, I just wanted to come and, you know, let you guys know what was going on. And I would really like to, you know, I think the, the town councils should, you know, I think this is an easy first step to help encourage business development. You know, I'm willing to put my own money. I'm not asking for you guys to extend the sewer lines or pay for telephone poles, bring power, sewer, anything in there. I'm willing to do that. I just need, I need your help is what I'm here for. So however we can work it, whatever's easiest for everybody, you know, is, is, you know, I'd love to do it in a timely manner, obviously, but you know, whatever's best for the town is what I'm here to help you guys with. You know, and I'm also always willing to help you guys with information as it pertains to cannabis because any questions? Thank you so much.
I guess I'm not sure where he would start then. Still, it, it's kind of something that, I mean, if, obviously we wouldn't just change it for him. But if that was something, it, it needs to start with the ordinance, correct? If he's going to have another permit and it.
Yep. You could ask the planning board to review the marijuana ordinance specifically about the number of places permitted.
And, and we could, and we could ask them either to completely remove any restriction or to modify the number.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you're the legislative body. You, you can make those changes. I don't, there's a process and the processes would come from.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So, um, as Alan kind of leans into my direction over here, I would, I would, um, counsel the council to think on it. If you don't need to think on it and you guys want to act now, then what you can do is you can, uh, direct, uh, me slash Alan to have the planning board have a conversation. You can think on it till the next meeting and then take action at that meeting. I mean, you have several choices, you know, um.
For me, I just wanted to understand what the process would look like.
I think that would be the process that, that it would go to the planning board for review. And the planning board is advisory to you. So they, that committee would do its work, report back to the council and then the council would decide what it would like to do.
Alan, I guess, uh, the, the gentleman had mentioned that Oxford has no, no limits. What about Norway? Uh, I don't know Poland.
He would probably know better than I do. I, I don't know about other town limits.
Yeah, so Poland is on a lottery system.
Oh, do you want to, yeah, come up to the.
I'd be happy to share information. Um, Norway is currently closed. They have not opted in, so they don't allow any retail whatsoever.
What, did, did they allow anything?
Uh, I don't believe so. They have not opted in whatsoever.
No medicinal, no, that's okay.
South Paris is in the process. They've been in the process for three years of writing an ordinance to opt in. They have one store open there. They got caught in some really bad miscommunications between their, uh, their planning board. So they have some stores they were allowed to open, then they had to suddenly close. So they're in the process of opting in as we already have and Poland is on a lottery system. So they had, they allowed a pool of applicants that said, hey, we want to come to your town and build something. And they handed out, they said four permits, five, six. I don't remember how many it was. And they, they handed out a lottery.
Oh, and Portland does that as well. Auburn?
Yeah, Auburn uses a setback system, which I think is really, really nice. Uh, what they do is they say, okay. Um, they, they took the town map and they said, all right, uh, we're just not going to have them all right close to each other. So if you're uh, it has to be, I believe, a thousand feet from nearest property line to nearest property line. So if you want to have a second store or, you know, someone different, you know, it needs to be a thousand feet away. So it allows them to be spread out around the town.
But they don't have a limit or they don't.
No limit. Nope. As long as you can fulfill the setbacks, you can open.
Okay, um. Well, and the state require the, the no churches, no.
Yeah, yeah, there's rules around schools and, you know, secondary, you know, education, things like that. But, um, as it pertains to like my specific situation, there's, there'd be no, no rules against that because it's the same owner.
I know Lewiston is quite big, but you.
Same thing with Auburn setbacks.
Okay, so they're not, they're, they're not limiting the number of, um, of.
Total retail permits. Yeah.
But they're just doing the guidelines. If you want to do one, these, uh, the rules that you need to follow.
Yep.
Uh, okay.
Yep.
Anything in Turner?
Uh, Turner, uh, they were, they had some very difficult regulations to get retail because that roof four corridor was very complicated for them, I remember. Um, but I don't believe they have a limit. It's same thing. As long as you fulfill the guidelines and you're, you're a certain setback and you're uncertain, I believe they have certain corridors you could be and could not be.
And Oxford has no limit.
No limit licensure.
And how many do they have?
In the first hour, when they passed this, I believe they passed this about four months ago, six months ago, they, they passed it six months ago, they had eight, eight stores in the first hour.
Okay, they're calling twenty six from the, from where he is down twenty six, the marijuana mile of Oxford.
There's a lot coming, a lot of them coming.
Uh, well, there's, uh, supply and demand, you know, there's only so many stores that can survive, right?
That's the truth, a hundred percent. Yeah.
I'm trying to think, any Harrison?
Harrison is not opted in. Bridgeston has opted in, I believe, with a limit. Um, I think that's all the towns around here. West Paris opted in.
But getting back to Oxford, does Oxford have guidelines, uh, you know, like setbacks like Auburn has?
They're very, very loops. Yes, they do. But it's pretty much like, as long as you're not within a thousand feet of a school and, um, it's also very expensive um, in, in Oxford.
Okay, yeah, uh, off the cuff question, how can your guys all survive?
That, that's a, I think it's, we're convenient to be in Maine in the sense that we're not the first one to pass recreational rules, right? We have Colorado to look at. So we kind of use Colorado as our crystal ball, kind of looking to the future. So we look at, you know, Colorado, you're a hundred percent right. Colorado was the first state to legalize marijuana. So they said, oh, let's jump in, all these investors, open up all these stores. We had a big boom and then they had a big crash, right? Cause as the supply goes up, price dropped, people that couldn't survive on that price drop fizzled out, right? But then the businesses came back in, you know, after that really a big, you know, boom, and then the crash, then the businesses, you know, came in that could be sustainable. So I think that's why I'm, you know, really trying to build a sustainable business by building a sustaining structure. You know, by having something that's really beautiful and being in my close proximity to the casino. I think that's something that I'm really using to help be my competitive advantage in the market. I'm really trying to play on casino traffic, you know? I think that we should encourage more businesses to do that. We are so close to the casino and there's so much money flowing up twenty six every day. As you guys probably know, you guys live here with me. You know, I think that, that's where I'm trying to go with, but I, I, you know, I, I agree with you, Rose. I think we should be careful. That's why I don't want to really see the town go absolutely no limit licensure. I think that's dangerous in the sense that you know, we could have a lot of construction in ten years, we could have a lot of empty places. You know, so I don't, I'm not in favor of completely going the way of Oxford, but I think there's, there's a, there's a middle ground in there.
Thank you. And we have to remember too, that unlike Oxford, we only have thirteen miles.
Yeah, go ahead. How far are you from, um, Bob Clark's facility, you know?
As the crow flies?
Or the distance, driving distance? I, I, I don't know how they, how they measure the.
It, it's as a crow flies.
Yep. So how, how far are you from him? Mile?
About three.
So if you did a three mile distance between facilities, we're only eleven miles. Then you would, you could do the math on that and figure that out.
Uh, Alan, how, have you guys looked into?
There's four permits up there.
Yeah.
And I know you, I, I'm at, talk to you.
And I'm, I'm sure it would take a lawyer to figure it out, but because the permits have already been given out, open ended with no date on them. Can we change that? Without them being used is what I'm saying. Like the, there's two permits out there right now that are not being used. Um, instead of more permits, can we say that something needs to be done with those permits in a certain state? If they're not.
I think we could. It doesn't say that in the ordinance.
Right, no, I know. I understand that.
And I would, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I would have to defer to John.
Well, my question is our building permits are thirteen months. And if you don't utilize it and come in for an extension, you lose it.
If you think the way an attorney is going to think on either side of that argument, though, they, they could, there could be an argument for, I haven't been able to, or the state hasn't, there's a waiting period for those. I know that there's a waiting period for the recreational licenses.
Right.
So they, they have been giving them out, but they are not caught up. They're not.
Right, but if they've not even applied.
Right.
Right, so you can say, you can say there's, there's a waiting period. Well, you say that like six years and hold on to the permit. If you never even apply, then you're not going to get that permit.
Right.
Is there any way as a codes officer, you can call them up and inquire as to if they have this application and where it is in the process?
I, I could. I can ask anything.
Right, you can ask.
Doesn't mean they're gonna necessarily answer you, right?
Well, the, the one down near Five Corners, I, I know they're in the process because I've been in touch with third party people. So the, the, the thing about that is think about the legalities involved with that.
Right.
So I've been in touch with an engineer and an architect for the, um, retail holder down near Five Corners. That's a lot of money already.
About that one. I'm concerned about the gentleman who tried to sell it to Mister.
So, yep, and I've, and I've talked to Bob and he said he is in the process of changing, uh, I, I assume businesses do that all the time. And he's, he's changing his plan.
Well, I understand that, but my question is, is there any way for you to call the state to verify that he has in fact submitted an application to change that plan? And where it is in the process?
I can always try. They're only allowed to give out certain information. I don't know if that's information they can give out. But they can verify, I know they can verify licenses people hold. But if he's in, I don't know if they can tell me if he's in the application process. If he doesn't hold a retail license, they could tell me that. If he holds a medical license, they can tell me that. I know they can do those things. But that wouldn't say that he's in the application process, but I can ask them for that information.
If I may, one more thing. I think a really easy solution to this is, you know, I think that I would, you know, encourage the town council to kind of look at this on a case by case basis. You know, I think Paula had a great point. It was kind of using setbacks. I think that's been used very successfully in many other towns around us. I don't think no limit licensure is correct for the town. I think that's dangerous and kind of, you know, especially with the future coming up. But I think setbacks would be the way to go and or I think you guys can look at this as a, a case by case basis. You know, if there was other town residents, you know, here asking for, you know, to build other stores, I think that you guys could look at that as a whole, but right now it's just, I think it's, I mean, I'm the one here in front of you, you know, and that's the one that I think I've proven a good track record and I would like to, you know, continue on that. So.
Thank you.
Madam Jim? I guess. Madam Chair, I guess maybe someplace along the line, I'd like a workshop on this and so to look at the ordinances and, um, I just feel I need, need more information to make a decision and to, to understand, um, you know, how we can.
Right, and best make things work. Just as a sort of a thought, we have ordinances so that we don't have to do it on a case by case basis. There's sort of those rules. So while I appreciate that, much like Ellen said, we don't want to be doing it on a case by case basis. Cause if we say no to somebody else, why did we say no to them? We definitely don't need any of that.
Want to show favor.
No. So I can see that, but yeah, I, I just, I agree with Rose. It's better to have more information to, to, you know, move forward. So I would entertain a, uh, marijuana workshop, marijuana ordinance workshop or.
I'll move that we do a marijuana workshop.
And I'll second that.
I'm not sure when the date certain would be.
Yep, maybe after midnight, good luck into her.
Okay, so you guys tell me how you want to do this. I'm, I'm totally cool with just you guys doing this. But where this is my first, you know, my, well, actually my second rodeo here, meeting wise. If you guys want to keep things, your agenda thing tight, then you'll have to take a vote to suspend the rules. And then make a motion to what you guys are talking about and then we can go ahead and do that. Okay?
We can also put this on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes.
To have a, to discuss further, because we, I mean, we can all sit, talk about it, but it would be nice to have, uh, someone who knows, knows all of, you know, knows about it and can answer our question.
Thing is, um, October twenty-seventh, the Maine Municipal Association is having a webinar update on marijuana issues that we can all do. I've signed up for it. Um, I don't know now that Ms. Julie's on, I don't know who would do the signing up of you.
Um.
So I, I'm going to be doing that as well. And so if any other council members want to do that, uh, we'll make sure that we sign you up for.
Yeah, cause we can do that on our own and then come back with that sort of information. So that might be a.
And then do a workshop for the November meeting.
So do you want to work, just, just tell, just direct me to put a workshop on the November agenda?
I think that would be, well, wait, November's going to be very busy, isn't it? I don't want to, I don't, let's, uh, let me. So maybe we put the item on the agenda.
Okay.
And then, and discuss it further.
Okay, so no, November agenda item.
Yeah. And so, but in the meantime, we're free to sign up for that webinar.
Yep.
On our, like on our own, so that we can gather more information.
Well, you have to let them know.
Well, right, but right, but I, we can decide on that. We don't have to vote or anything. We can just.
And Julie or Lori or somebody will, will sign you up.
That's, that's, uh, October what? Twenty-seven, twenty-seven. It's a Wednesday.
It's the webinar thing, so you can.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that type of.
Maine, uh, Maine.
The Maine Municipal Association will send you an email with a link in it.
Yeah.
So I think another smart move that I'll do in conjunction with Alan, he went back, okay, is that, um, either he or I will get, will send you, um, assuming it's easily found, the ordinance that we currently have. So you know, that's the starting place, right?
Yeah.
So you have that information, then those that want to do the.
It's been a year ago? Is it October?
Uh, it's been three years ago now.
What, what did we do last fall?
We modified.
Modified it, okay. So yeah, that would be, that would be good to have just so when, when we hear about them and they speak of it, where we have the information in front of us about the limits and regulations.
Council. Current ordinance.
If anybody is interested in signing up the class, just shoot, either Lori or I an email and we still probably have time to, to get you into that class. I'll be back Friday.
Thank you.
And, and that's actually a good point, because normally there are cutoffs. I wanted to sign up for one and I was a daily a dollar short.
Well, I guess Laura, you could put me down, sign me up.
Okay, we, we ready to move on? We will address that next. We will revisit it next month.
What's that?
That we will revisit the marijuana topic next month.
Yeah.
Don't have to change anything for today. All right, moving on, um, council discussion topics.
Did you have?
Um, I was just wondering where we need to do the Roberts Rules of Order to put the, uh, least thing into it. Oh, well, poor Jeff can go home.
Oh.
Yes. So do you want me to do a preamble?
Please.
Sure. Okay. All right. So, um, in front of council members is a resolution tonight. For those that are here in the audience and for those, um, participating at home. Um, and the, and the, the thought process is, is that, um, in speaking, uh, personally with all of the council members, one-on-one, they, uh, to a person have shown great support and interest in the town of Mechanic Falls, keeping its own local police department. And, uh, our chief Goss is here this evening. Um, and, um, uh, the resolution that is in front of them is basically a simple resolution that does state. You want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, it goes like this, folks. Be it resolved by the Town Council of Mechanic Falls, that we offer a united vote of confidence and support to keep and maintain our own local Mechanic Falls Police Department. And assuming that they do vote on this tonight, my apologies for those, um, who would say, well, it's not on the agenda. It was meant to be on the agenda. It was my mistake. And so, uh, by bringing it up during town council, uh, comments, um, we are, I have asked if they want to do this, for them to suspend Robert rules, take a vote to suspend Robert rules and to add this, uh, resolution to the agenda, uh, for later this evening to be voted on. And so, um, I don't know if any of the counselors want to make comment at this time. Um, or if you, uh, want to first suspend Robert rules, but I'll toss that back to you.
I make a motion that we suspend Robert's Rules of Order in order to add a support for our local PD onto the agenda.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, so this will now be item one point four. Um, excuse me, eleven point four on your agenda.
Okay.
It will come after the liquor license votes. Okay?
Absolutely. Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Norma Crabtree, twenty-three Highland Avenue. Um, I am in support of keeping the, uh, police force. There has been talk of some citizens in town about why don't we get rid of them and use the sheriff's department? I would like to pose the question, is it possible for either the town manager, Jeff, town council, to put together a comparison between what it would cost us for the sheriff's department and what it will cost us for the town police force? Showing exactly what we would get for benefits from the sheriff's department, which I do not feel would even come close to what we get from our police department. And the cost between the two. And another thing that some of the townspeople do not realize, if we approached the sheriff's department for them to take over, they would have to accept us, which I don't believe is something that would happen. So my request is just to show the townspeople, and I, I believe it's just a very few that want to go with the sheriff's department, uh, so that maybe they can fully realize how much better we are with our own force and how cost-effective it would be with our own force. Thank you.
Thank you. We have sort of all thought about that, but do we need to like, would we need to ask them for a quote? Like how much work would that involve to present this sort of information?
Um, so, uh, for me, in having this conversation with you folks, um, to me, that would be a great conversation to have. If we get to a point where we, Jeff looks at us, Chief Goss looks at us and says, I just don't see it happening, then I think that we could really get into that comparison of numbers.
Right, but at this point, we do know, we do have a, a, a guess and we know that what it entails if we were to borrow them right now.
If I may, can we, can we, instead of having this at eleven point four, move this up to now? For two reasons. One, so that poor Chief Goss could be a part of this conversation. And two, we can have this, this vote and get the poor man home, because he's got to be back here in quick.
Well, yeah, but it's just, the vote is just later. We can discuss it now. So if Jeff wants to come up and speak, that, that's just for the vote. For us to approve it later. Okay. So that, so that is, is there now, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can do it either way.
But we can have a conversation now. And so if Jeff, do you want to speak to anything?
You have a question for me?
Um, well, I guess, in your opinion, much like Norma said, people are speaking about, well, we don't have, can't get our own officers, we should go with the county.
Right.
And we, as individuals, know.
People need to understand, there's two different things with the county. There's just getting rid of our police force and basically dropping into their rural patrol, which means there's not necessarily anybody in this town all the time. Um, the, the deputies, they're thin, they, they cover the entire county. So their deputies may be on a call over in Leeds when you have a call here. Rural Patrol, you don't necessarily have anybody in your town, you know, patrolling from beginning of shift to end of shift. Now, if you do a contract, which is similar to what Poland does, you have contracted deputies that stay in your town and work in your town, but they're, they're employees. They fall under their bargaining agreement and all of that. They're, and all their rules that they have. So that's the two different things, because, uh, you know, and a misconception from the public that I hear is that, oh, the county, the county is awful. No, the county isn't awful. A lot of those guys worked here. They're all good people. Great people. The difference is when you have rural patrol, you don't have anybody necessarily in your town. And it is very possible to wait an hour for somebody to answer your call. And if it's an extreme emergency, probably not, but it depends. It depends on where they're coming from. Um, if you have a contract, then somebody's in your town, just like we are. So it, but that would be the thing, if you wanted to do a apples to apples comparison, you would have to compare having a contract with the county, if you're comparing to us, because we're in your town all the time.
And that would be a contract with four or five.
Rare exceptions of court and stuff like that. We're in this town.
But that, but that would be, we'd have to compare four or five officers, not just.
Correct.
Two.
Correct. You, you have twenty-seven coverage, twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-four, seven coverage from us when we're fully staffed and we're here. And you would have to work out the same amount from now. If, if you're comparing apples to apples. Um, I don't want to speak for the sheriff of Andersgård County, but I know from past events that asking a number from them isn't like just, they can sit down and in fifteen minutes, they can scratch something out on paper. It takes a good deal of work. I don't know if they're willing to do that work unless they feel it's a serious asking, not just a, well, just because we want to, for instance. I'm not sure. That would be a question that would have to be posed to the Eric Sampson, the sheriff of Andersgård County. As far as we go, I'm here, I'm trying to make this work. I have, I interviewed two subjects for the sergeant's position. Um, I hope, I've pretty much kind of made my selection who I believe, but a lot of it hinges on this tonight, because that person doesn't want to give up their current job if, is not going to be supported in the town here.
Right.
Which I don't blame them.
No, no, absolutely.
That, and I'm also just waiting on a piece from the union for this town. Because even though there aren't people here, there's, there is a contract, so there's still a union in town here. And I'm waiting to hear from their representative, but I have it on good faith that I'll be hearing from them tomorrow.
So, and if anybody want, knows, wants to know what it's like, my dad was hit and run over at dad's place on Sunday and it was over an hour before the sheriff's department showed up.
But they are covering for us and I am extremely grateful.
Right.
Because I, I just, I can't be.
But that's the difference between having our local.
Yes, yeah, that's, that, and that's rural patrol. That's, that's what, you know, everybody that doesn't have a PD or a contract deals with.
The other thing is, is back in, I think it was two thousand and ten, um, when Riley Bryant was on here, he's the sheriff's deputy with Andersgård. It was asked for an art riff to be gotten for the same purpose. And when Mr. Lee went to them, um, they said, yeah, no, thank you. We're not even interested. And they wouldn't even discuss it.
Questions for Jeff?
Well, keep up the good work, Jeff.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And, and good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
You, you have my total support.
Yes. Thank you so much for all that you're doing, Mr. Goss.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other council discussion topics? Have anything to? We will move on then. Uh, Vic, town manager report.
Okay, um, hey, Alan, if you can hear me, uh, you want to come into the, uh, meeting room for a moment, please? And while he does that.
No.
So ladies and gentlemen, it is my great privilege to announce to you the following. Alan has earned his CEO certification. How about?
Congratulations.
Um, so now a little story, folks. Um, this Thursday, between nine AM and eleven AM, there will be a DEP inspection at our transfer station. This is an annual event. And in, uh, prepping for this annual event, um, I came across, um, a fact that inadvertently our testing, our water testing, uh, contract had expired. And, um, so I was scrambling to try to fix it so that way we can have, uh, water testing, uh, uh, continue, uh, that is mandated for us to do. The last test was in the spring of two, twenty twenty. Um, I have the, the net result is, is that, um, we will have testing in November of twenty twenty-one. So even though we haven't done the number of tests that we were supposed to, at least we have, we will have continuity between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Now, the little details in there that, that you should be aware of is that, um, I reached out to the company that was serving the town of Mechanic Falls and, uh, spoke with them. And I brought Tarsha into this conversation, um, again as chair. So that way she would have, you know, some working knowledge of, of what I'm talking about. And, um, so we have secured a, what I've done is secured a one-off testing for November just to get us back up and running. And, um, then the, that same company will be providing us with a, another three-year contract for you all to consider. So, um, we currently have sufficient dollars in the line item to do this. Um, and it's, um, uh, the estimate is for it to be just over five thousand dollars. We won't know the final bill until we get it. But because the testing hasn't been done, this first test will be more thorough than just standard.
Repeat.
Guess three times a year testing. And so this will, this will be taking place. And, um, and then as soon as I get that proposal, I'll, I'll get that to you.
Now, where this has gotten lost in the chaos of the last couple of years, obviously.
I would say so. I mean, I, I think it was, you know, it was just one of those things.
Are we okay with just being okay? Are we allowed to just go back and contract with them since the contract expired? Or by law, are we required to put a riff? Or by law, are we required to put a RIF out?
So, so in the research that I did, if, if you're talking about concerning the DEP or just concerning town rules.
Town rules and state rules.
If you, if you're talking about just town rules. So in my, in my research here, I have found that on something that's called your policy regarding the purchase and sale of public property, there is a line in there that says that the town manager may request that the council waive the bid process for an item or service.
Okay.
Okay. Only as allowed by the town's purchasing policy. And then the town's purchasing policy says exemptions from competitive bidding include contracts for professional services.
Okay.
Okay? So we're okay.
Sounds like it's something new, something that we've had.
Yeah.
It just lapped, so we need to.
So the proposal that I got, again, the estimate proposal, is for $5,150. There's $8,000 in the line item for the current fiscal year to do the testing. And the, technically, if it's $5,001 to $10,000, you guys are supposed to give me the fish, you know, give me the thumbs up. I front, I front ran the system, this item, because we need to be back on the board. So if you all feel compelled to take a vote, feel free to. We don't have the final bill on it. It's a proposal at this point in time. And they told me that if they went over it, that they would get to us before then. And so it's going to be broken down to two parts, the actual testing and then the lab results. And the people doing the result, lab results are different than the people doing the testing. So I felt that with the DEP inspection coming up, I needed to have as many answers as quickly as possible. So like I said, in chats with, with Tarsha, just decided to make it so. And so I don't know what that final bill will be, if it will be over 5K or under 5K, but that, there you have it. So if you guys want to take an official vote, again, you can, you know, suspend the rules and we can add it to the agenda tonight. Or you can just say, let her rip, you know? But for the three-year thing, definitely, and this is kind of how I default to it. The people that were doing it are going to be the most intimate with the situation. And so it makes sense to at least get a three-year proposal from them. Now, if the three-year proposal sounds like it's, you know, way out of the question to us and doesn't pass the giggle test, then I think we can open it up for a RIF at that point in time.
But there's nothing that says we have to at this point.
Yeah, based on, based on what I'm seeing here, you know, and I got it, I got it all highlighted and everything. So, so that's my story.
Vic did his research and we discussed it and it was, seemed like the best route to go to keep us in line and keep us, you know, like you said, the continuity between 2020, 2021, and then we'll all review that new content.
Yeah, because I didn't want to let it slip into 2022, you know?
The DEP can be ugly and we don't need ugly right now, no.
So we'll, we'll have fun and merriment on Thursday morning. Anybody can join us if you want to come to the transfer station. Okay, so there's that. So I did sign the main power options contract. I did meet with RSU Superintendent Ken Healy, had a great meeting. I did meet with Mr. Garland and from Poland and Danielle Loring from Minna. We had a great luncheon. And so there's some stuff there. Council tours, I've labeled the following council tours. So in the discussion with Rose and y'all, you had shown some interest in visiting the different physical sites in the town of Mechanic Falls and kind of learning the 101. And I have spoken with Scott from Public Works, and he has agreed to be the opening act. And so I don't know what your schedules are like, if at all possible. I would like to try to schedule it during a business day, so he's not coming out special in the evening. If need be, we can do that. But I don't know what your availability might or might not be. So I'm just going to throw out something for you. You can feel free to say, Vic, that is just not doable. And then come up with something that is doable, okay? And it doesn't even have to be done this minute, but the, I looked at my calendar and I was looking at, and I haven't even, I, I did do a tour today with Scott, by the way. Drove by Rose, she was out mowing the lawn, went, went up to, went up to the farm, saw, saw everything up there with Paula and, and whatnot, and I got a great tour with, with Scott. I was looking at Thursday, October 21st, maybe 10:00 AM? Or sometime in the afternoon? And again, that's, I'm just picking a day just because it happens to be empty on my calendar pretty much so far.
10:21?
At 10:00 AM, does that, does that work for you all? And what we'll do is we'll meet here and, and walk over and he can show us everything that's going on and kind of give you a feel for it. And I think this is a good thing for you guys to do. Because, you know, when we talk about plow trucks and we talk about other equipment, you get to see it. You get to see what the problems are, what the good things are, you know, and, and make assessments yourself as we talk about it during the budget cycle.
And meet the people.
And meet the people.
I just have one question. So how will that work if we're convening together?
Oh, so what we'll do is we'll just post it.
Okay, so that it's happening, we're going to be touring the public.
Yeah.
Work site.
Yeah.
Okay.
If the public wants to come along, they can certainly come along.
I just want to cover all the bases, sure.
That's a great point, actually. That's a very good point. So we'll just post it on the website. At that, let me confirm it with Scott first, because, you know, somebody's got to link first and give a date and time. So I figured I'd check with you guys first and then check with him.
We need to address the NIMs training too.
Need to address?
The NIMs training, there were more.
The NIMs training in terms of getting the certificates?
No, there were more than us.
More than.
Or.
Quorum at the.
Oh, oh.
Oh, the NIMs training?
Oh. Well, well, folks, it was, I guess it was kind of like a happy accident.
Oh.
So in the future, we will do, we will do better. But our folks needed NIMs training. It's mandatory for counselors to take. And we had three, four, three?
Three.
Three of us.
Three counselors at the NIMs training on that night. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. And so if anybody has any concerns about that, feel free to let me know. But it was a good evening, got some training. And certificates will be ensuing. And in the future, we will kind of double down and make sure that when we have opportunities like that, like if we're going to an MMA training in Augusta or something, that we give due notice.
Yeah, it was on September 22nd. And you were there and you know there was no town business discussed.
Yeah, I sat with y'all and, I mean, good talk, great lasagna.
Okay, so I'm going to put it temporarily in my calendar for the 21st at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, I just picked it out of the blue. And I'll check with Scott on that. And then assuming we're, we're a go, I'll send you out an email and then I'll have it posted on the website. Okay? And that will do it for me.
Thank you very much. Moving on to old business. Back to you, Vic, 9.1, 22 Pleasant Street update. Is there anything to update?
I signed the contract. I want to tour the building. I think that makes sense. I'm going to reach out the Realtor and have him, him or her show me and, and I'll take a walk through and get their thoughts.
Let me know when that happens because I might come along.
Okay, all right.
If you, just whenever it is, if I can make it, just because I have never been in the building either.
Tarsha.
But at this point, so you signed the contract like we had.
Yeah, like you guys had voted.
That we had voted on, okay. So that's the only.
Yeah.
It's just, we just moved forward, okay?
Right.
Okay. Right, then we'll move on to new business. 10.1, authorized AR, I mean APRA representative. An entertaining motion to approve Vic Hutchins for this, to be the representative.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We might want to let the people know what that means.
So what's that, the American? It's a rescue plan.
Rescue Plan Act, I think.
Oh, American Plan.
Amer- American Plan Rescue Act.
Isn't it?
Oh.
Isn't it ARPA?
Okay, hold on, it's probably here in my paperwork. We, we lovingly.
ARPA.
We call it ARPA.
ARPA. Okay, that's why, because it's, so it's the American Rescue Plan Act. Okay, so these letters are just. So that's what the President and the Senate, everyone, they passed.
Yeah, and the town of Mechanic Falls will be receiving two tranches of $157,000 and change in each tranche. I am literally with Lisa's help and the people from ARPA, where you have to go on to their portal.
Yes.
And that's why I need you guys to make me the authorized person to do that on behalf of the town. Lisa will assist and will fill in all the paperwork online and officially request that they send us the first tranche.
Okay.
And we have just a couple of weeks to get that done. And then they just extended the first reporting, what are you doing with the money? So they're going to send us the money, we're going to put it in, in a special account. And then as we spend it, we have to.
Report.
Report to them how we spent it. And hopefully get their thumbs up and, and love.
Right, so we've discussed how we're going to spend it anyway, right? Have we had, we've had.
You have a couple of items that you had, the council has already approved. I'm hoping that that does in the end work.
Okay.
We just got, again, baby steps, go through the process. So the good news is for all concerned, that we have until the end of 2024 to decide how we're going to spend the monies. And then by the end of 2026, to spend the monies.
Oh, wow.
And report how we spent the money.
They extended it all, wow.
Yeah, so we have quite a bit of runway here. So on my computer, if you looked at my computer screen, I have a little sticky note on it that's building, one of you saw it, maybe you did, that, that of the, the council approvals so far. And I'm already building a wish wants list from others about future spending. Okay? So, and I'm sure we'll have plenty of good discussions to come on.
Okay. All right, then, all those in favor?
I thought Daryl. I voted.
No, no.
I think I seconded. I think I seconded.
It was Paula.
No, Rose did.
Oh, Rose. Sorry.
Today, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
It's a Monday, and the Cats played last night, okay?
I think everybody.
Yeah. They played Tom Brady. Okay, so we're good, moving on. 10.2, Warden for the November 2 election.
I make a motion that we appoint Nancy Peterson.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? 10.4, Appointment of General Assistant Administrator.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss, oh, I missed one, sorry. 10.3, Appointment to the Rec Committee, Carrie Parity. Motion to approve that.
I move we approve the adoption of.
Christine? No, it's Carrie.
Carrie Parity as a member of the Rec Committee.
Okay. Any discussion?
Only a question I have, because I'm not sure, some boards require you have to be a resident and some say you don't. Is this one of them that you don't have to? She's a Poland resident.
You don't have to. You don't, you don't have to. No, we've, we've had this conversation back this spring. And I, I don't know exactly where it is.
Go ahead. Just wasn't Justin living? Was it Justin?
Yeah, there's actually a few members, yeah, because Justin Starbird doesn't live in town and neither, his mother lives in Poland.
Poland, yeah.
And then Carrie lives in Poland, so they didn't, they don't have to live in town to be on this.
Yeah, I've come across some verbiage on that, I don't recall it.
I, I just know that it was addressed back this spring and it, it, we're not going to tell someone if they want to volunteer and help us out, that they can't come. No, you know what I mean? Like, there's just certain things that you don't do. So yes, that's a, okay, she is in Poland, but, so, all those in favor? All right, now 10.4, Appointment of the General Assistant Administrator. The woman who was doing it got done, correct?
Yeah, Michelle was doing it. Is that what?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so she's no longer going to do it, and so you're, you're taking that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is me doing.
I make a motion that we appoint Vic to the General Assistant Administrator.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 10.5, Resignation of Arlena Stotts from the school board.
I move we accept her resignation from the school board with regret.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for being willing to serve our community.
All those in favor? Okay, 10.6, A motion to appoint a Morrison.
First name is?
Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Alyssa Morrison, okay, so she's going to take over, she would take over for Arlena. I'd entertain a motion for that.
Well, I move we accept the school board appointment of Alyssa Morrison.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I think I'll just skip the next one. 10.7, Removal of Julie Ward from the bank accounts because she is leaving. So the ones that she needs to be removed from are Deerago Santa, Homecoming, Recreation, and other accounts.
Yeah, we wanted to throw in the, and other necessary accounts.
In case.
Because we, you know, just in case we come across something after tonight, right?
I make a motion that we remove Julie Ward from all bank accounts having to do with the town. Is that, would that be?
Yes.
Yeah, as, as stated.
As need.
Any discussion?
Thank you so much for the time you've given us, Julie, and we're greatly going to miss you.
Yes, we definitely will miss you. We're happy for you, but we'll miss you.
Thank you, I will miss you too. It was not an easy decision for me and I will miss you all. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I am in Florida enjoying the weather.
Don't be sorry, don't be sorry. I hope you get to go again.
I am not leaving, I'm not leaving until the 22nd, so I will be there until October 22nd.
You need to fix my.
Yeah, you got a lot of eye patch to fix when you get back.
All right, so all those in favor? So she's just taken off from it, you're still on it, and then the new town clerk will be put on it.
Right.
Okay, so just now.
Lisa must be on.
Yeah.
I believe, I believe Lisa is on all of the Deerago accounts and Michelle is on the Santa account. So there are other people on the account. I was just on all of them as a backup.
Okay. Okay, moving on. We hear that ordinances that we need to accept liquor licenses. 11.1, Proposed Article for 11 to 2021.
I make a motion that we accept proposed article for 11 to 2021's vote.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 11.2, Liquor License from the, the American Legion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? 11.3, The Liquor License for Little Brick Pub.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
So actually, I have a question before we move on to the last one. Julie, you might want to step in here a little bit. So they should sign the liquor licenses now? Or later? I don't know what your guys' rhythm normally is.
You can just pass them around to sign. They have to sign the ARPA one as well, so they. Um, you can just pass them around to sign. They have to sign the ARPA one as well, so they can do that while you guys are talking. And then they can give it back to Lori.
Okay, and do, do they need to sign the, the article? For the warrant for the November election?
No, as long as it's documented that they approved it, that's fine.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, do you want to take care of the last item and then sign or sign and then take care of the last?
We'll just take care of the last item and then pass it around. So eleven point four is the resolution supporting our police department here in Mechanic Falls. So I.
I make a motion that we sign as a body to unify and to support our local police department.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? You have, you have one that you're passing around?
So, yeah, so just sign, just, just take probably yours.
You can sign yours and keep going.
Yeah, just, just one.
Okay. So then you'll pass the rest of them around as well, so we'll be signing those.
There you go.
You have the ARPA one.
Of the ARPA one, I think I have to sign. I don't think there's a sign line for you guys.
Well, she's signing the warrants right now, there's something else. And the liquor life, right?
We have.
There's another folder.
Yeah, the blue folder.
Okay. That's fine, I just didn't realize that. So we'll do, when we go into executive session, then when we come out, we'll be done, correct?
Yeah, so you can actually do what you did last time, just because there's not going to be any action. I'm just going to, it's going to be an informational thing.
Okay.
And then. We'll send Lori home and then I'll just record the times.
Is that for you then?
Just the ARPA thing. Yeah, I think I'll sign that. Yeah, yeah. Actually, why don't you hold on to this until tomorrow? Good catch.
Now, do we have to wait until Ms. Julie comes back for the town clerk to sign that so Chief Goss can have a copy of it? Or can he have a copy of that to be able to show to Officer?
His video.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, the good thing is, is nobody didn't get him. He does get trouble.
Yes, sir, come on up to the, come on up to the.
Yeah. I wanted on, and the green light's on, okay. Penny Emery, forty-six Clifford Street, Mechanic Falls, oh, four, two, five, six. Okay, I want to know, it was, somebody overcharged AMI for taxes. And I was going to discuss that tonight, because you didn't have the money last month to give her back. So, did you come up with the money? How did you settle that?
Oh, okay, so yeah, that was, that was what we talked about. That was the proposed article and it's going to be on the ballot in November. Because basically, we have to ask the voters if we can spend, if the town allows us to spend that money. Are the undesigned funds, which is, which is money that we, that we have.
Just to continue on with my question, when you sent her that bill, did she pay you? Or did she just fight it right away because she knew it was wrong?
No, Julie, Julie basically said, do you want to speak to this? Basically, that it was. Did you hear what she asked?
Yep, so what happened is when she got her bill, she questioned the amount. Because it was over thirty thousand dollars more than last year's bill. So we went back and did some research and realized that. There was a fat finger in her amount of machinery that she owns. She was actually built for one point six million dollars worth of machinery and it should have only been like a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So it was a clerical era, era right from the get-go. So she technically did not owe that money. And. The money that was included in the budget should have never been included because of the clerical era. So that money would have obviously been budgeted from the get-go. And we wouldn't have to do this, but it's just, you know, everybody makes mistakes. And it just happened to be a, a large one, unfortunately.
I guess I, I'm not very smart, you know that. But I don't, if no money changed hands with anybody, how did you get the money to put in your budget? You just thought she was going to mail it later? I just don't understand, I don't.
So they get the bills, oh, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, go ahead, Tarsha, sorry.
Well, we get our, our property bill and, you know, and hers was way, we charged her more than we were supposed to. But we base the budget based on, you know, we thought we were going to get thirty more thousand. So we put, that was in the budget, like this is what we are expecting to get, but we're not going to get it. No, we're not going to get it.
So we have to make up the money.
So we have to make up the money, because we already passed a budget, so now we have to say.
Have a bottle drive. No, I, I just wanted to know how to settle it.
The money, it's just a different fund, okay?
Can't spend it without permission from me. It's not that we, the money's not there.
Right, it's just not in the right department.
Permission.
Yeah, okay. And this is just the checks and balances, so that everyone knows what's happening.
Wasn't here for the beginning.
And this was also a better option than sending everybody a supplemental tax bill. Because I'm sure other residents would have not been happy to get like a three or four dollar supplemental bill. To make up for that thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, alright, if we're all signed, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the. That when we come out of it, we'll be convening, we'll be done. Yeah, so you don't have to wait till it's done. So I would entertain that motion.
You gotta give the.
Oh, yeah, well.
You gotta read the whole.
That's why we usually let her do it.
Yes, all of these, the whole thing, so that it gets noted.
I make a motion that we enter into executive session under Title I MRSA, Section four oh five, six A, Personnel Matters.
I second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you for coming up.
Good night, folks.
Did you have a meeting?
We did.
No one came.
I didn't know about it.
It was posted.
Where did you post that?